Moving on to item number 12. Our community sponsorship policy. With Diana. She's coming right now. And Sandy, you're on the list as soon as she's done.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And Council. So, on February 19th, Council requested that staff bring forward an administrative policy for community sponsorship. So, the purpose of the policy is to establish guidelines for city sponsorship of community events, establish uniform procedures and criteria, and identify coordination responsibility. So, the city does not have a formal written policy for council members and the public to request sponsorship of community events. So, what staff is proposing is a policy in general that the budget would be established by city council each year during annual budget process. Sponsorships will only be provided for events and organizations meeting the eligibility criteria, and the city manager's office would be responsible for coordination responsibility. So, eligibility criteria for events would be that they provide a benefit to Yuba City residents, that fundraising events for nonprofit organizations would primarily, those organizations would primarily serve Yuba City residents. The events would contribute positively to the recognition and image of Yuba City, and that they would be open to the general public. Through this process as written, it would require an application process in which the application would require written endorsement of at least one council member, and then there'd be two options for approval. As the city manager's office receives the application, we would either approach the mayor for that second approval to move forward. If the mayor did not want to do that, or if the mayor was not available, then we would approach two additional council members to see if they're willing to support the city sponsorship of the event, keeping in mind the Brown Act, so we don't have any violations. And then another item that we wanted to discuss was adding language to clarify who the city will pay for to attend a community event. One thing I'd like to note is currently the budget allocates approximately $55,000 towards city sponsorship of events, and the staff report identified events that the city has historically supported. I would like to note that those, the $55,000 covers actual monetary sponsorship. There's a lot of events in which we also provide in-kind services that, so for instance, the summer stroll, the Christmas stroll. Public Works provides services related to shutdown of the street, opening of the street, setting up the electrical. And so, we do that right now, and we don't transfer that, those charges to the Downtown Business Association. So, when you're keeping in mind the $55,000, if council wanted to truly allocate all city costs associated with events, we would need to keep in mind those in-kind costs that we provide as well. Another element of this is you'll get small events such as a motorcycle toy run in which the police department will provide a rolling traffic closure. Current policy right now is that the staff has the ability to waive up to $500 of that rolling closure. This program would formalize the process in that even if it's a smaller event, they have to go through this application process and get council approval in order for staff to be able to, you know, waive some of those fees. So, with that, the, I know there's a request to include language to clarify who the city will pay for to attend a community event, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Just one final note. What's proposed is very formal. You know, council, if this is too formal for councils liking, you can always relax the process, and we can discuss different ways that you could relax the process, but based upon input and feedback, this is what we propose in review of other agencies in terms of their administrative policies. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We do have requests to speak?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, first of all, Ms. Langley, thank you, and I want to bring some clarification because I see many people in the room from the Downtown Business District and such that may have some concerns, and I think concerns arose out of a misleading article from the Appeal Democrat this morning. And this policy that I particularly asked for is not about taking away any community support. This is not the Baca parade, that fiasco that went across, across the river. This is not what this is about. This is about bringing accountability to this council and our leadership team and the city as a whole, because right now without a policy, it's very simple. If I decide I want to go to an event, I pick up the phone, I call the city, say, "Hey, I would like you to sponsor this event. It's $1,000. I'd like to take whoever can go from the city. Next thing you know, we've bought a table, we're gone." That's not, in my opinion, accountable. We need to make sure that we are supporting the Downtown Business Association, the Rotary, the Kiwanis, the high schools. Everything that we normally do, we need to make sure we continue to do. This is an accountability, because if I put it on high center, there's five of us, and if each of us independently request $1,000 to go to an event, or 500 to go to an event, and we do two events each a year, that's $10,000, and this is taxpayers' money. So, I want to put everybody at ease, because I saw everybody show up. We want to continue doing the things we've done. This is all about accountability and transparency. So, hopefully, that right there just relieved a lot of worry in the room, because this is not what the paper misled people. This is not with, "Oh, my God, we're going to suddenly start having you pay for this and pay for that." This is about accountability and transparency and creating a formal process. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Sandy, would you like to speak? I've got your card. Yeah, she's, she's open for questions, so we're, uh...
I have a question. I was just going to do a quick little presentation.
Do your thing, and then we'll ask questions, and we'll go from there. I just don't want to forget public comment again.[412.02][412.02](Laughter). I hear it in my face.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Harris, councilman and councilwoman. We appreciate you allowing me a few moments of your time for the agenda to speak. My name is Sandy Drown, and I'm behalf of the Yuba City Downtown Business Association, or I'm here on behalf of the Yuba City Downtown Business Association located in the historic Plume Street District. My role with the DBA for the past two years is event chair, where I help with the summer and the Christmas stroll. We want to first start off with how much we appreciate our relationship with the city. We work with Darren and George, the police department, Sergeant Slate and Katie, the fire department, Jesse. Fire marshal, he helps us with our, our events. Public Works, Scott and Jack, Parks and Rec, Brad, and of course, the city council. This partnership has allowed us to have a better outreach to surrounding communities, to increase tourism, to address issues with safety and public concerns. The open dialogue and feedback has improved each event every year, and not only for our community, but an opportunity to attract visitors, short and long term. The DBA has many, has, went through many lengths in the past years to be self-efficient, such as negotiating cost-effective, better visible location for our DBA, hired a talented coordinator, and attract new business with better marketing, and continue to beautify our downtown. The downtown is the heart of the city. As the city council looks at budgeting, please consider the DBA. Thank you for your time, your partnership, and your consideration. And that was all I had to... I don't know if you guys have any questions for me? Nope? Okay. Thanks for clarifying, Councilman Shaw, because I, like, started, like, we're ready to run. It's like, I was like, "I'm just going to leave quietly."
You sat right down at your computer as soon as you read the paper this morning.
Right. I was scared.
All good. Anybody have any comment or questions?
Through the mayor. Just to echo council, council, I was going to say councilperson Shaw.
That's generic.
Okay, thank you.
All good.
Yeah. The, the, the lack of a process as it relates to the many, many requests that the city gets to sponsor events or organizations, et cetera, I think is, is needed, the, to put a process in play, excuse me. It became increasingly burdensome to me, because I think everybody has valuable things they want to do, and valuable organizations they want to support, and valuable events that they want to attend, and there's only so much money to spend. So, I think a process that allows us to, to evaluate and, and be the steward for public funds that the, the citizens have elected us to be is, is in the best interest of the city and for those organizations that, that want to, want to have our support. I wish, you know, you've heard over and over again tonight that we have all these issues with money. This is another one, is, you know, where do we fund all the needs? We want to be one of, one of the potential, Mr. Renton, one of the potential goals is, is, you know, quality of life, and quality of life means having a vibrant community and, and many events and, and things that we want to do and support, but there's only a finite amount of money. And so, this process, I fully support as an effort to try to, to vet those types of requests and make the best decisions that we possibly can with a finite amount of money.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor, did you want to go? Thank you, Mayor. I, I have to say with the last topic and this topic, they really kind of complement each other with the tourism and everything else. I do, I do want to caution us to not be so over-regulating as well. I, I think the process can be refined, but for a person that has so much already documents that we have to fill out, we have one report to send out to another, so I, I think it would be helpful, perhaps we can consider as a council, to identify those, those priorities in that funding. You know, the Downtown Business Association is a true partner of ours, you know. The tourism could be, those, those types of associations that we all tend to agree. And as a new member, because that's clear, that, and I, I just, I'm not interested in over-regulating things, but I am interested in being very conscientious of the use of funds. So, if the, if traditionally we have expended 55,000, it does not mean that we can reduce, why, why not reduce it to 30,000, and then just identify a block of specific ones, like the Downtown Association, and then incur the others with an easier process, you know, with one of the options. Maybe a person asks you, you sign it as a council member, comes to, to the council and gets approved. But, again, I'm, I'm not adding, I don't want to add more, more regulation. I'm asking for simplifying the process, reducing the amounts of funds, but staying within the, the partnerships that we have. And if we're going to, if we have excess funds somehow, somewhere, we can always revisit this. We don't have to finalize this as, as a final yes or no. So, that's, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor. But Diana, do you know how much we spend a year on all these finding chances? Does anybody know? It exceeds 55,000?
I'll look to Terrell Locke. I know we budget 55,000. Terrell, do we spend the entire 55,000?
Usually.
Okay.
Yes, we usually spend the entire 55,000.
And then, once we spend it, we're done. We can't, we can't do anymore.
And I just also want to note that 55,000 doesn't include the in-kind services that we provide to many of these events.
Right, for Public Works. That's correct. That's correct. And on those, also, we really don't sponsor service groups. We do all nonprofits. I noticed that, all our stuff is for nonprofits and, and organizations, and we really, we haven't sponsored any service groups, because they're raising the money to help the community also. I had noticed on that, so, and then, third thing is, is I think the city manager, the city manager's office, they make decisions, $50,000 decisions every day, and I think it's the city manager's office can make the decision for $1,000 or less on a community project. I don't think, if someone turns in an application, I think we have, we could trust our city manager and the office to make the decision to spend the money properly, and, and not make it a big issue for council to have to be involved in every single thing, and if it's over that, then we can get involved. And I had noticed that, you know, when we do sponsor a table or something like that, it's for council. You know, if we bring our spouses or whatever, you know, council has to pay for the spouses or significant others or whatever, so it's not like we're paying for, you know, extra folks. We're just, when we sponsor these tables, it's for city council and staff, certain staff members. So, about the only thing I would say is, I think for $1,000 or less, I think we should let the city manager, I think we could give the city manager responsibility and the office responsibility for that.
Through the mayor?
Go ahead.
The purpose and the background behind this is you lead by example, and we do need to be more accountable, and to talk about service organizations, they are nonprofits. Most every one of them are, and they give back to this city. I think of our Rotary Club. We gave 25,000 to the city for the pickleball courts, correct, Mr. Eiler? Okay. The partnerships we need to look at is with the people that partner with the city. And when we do an event and we do a sponsorship, it's not from myself, Mr. Mayor. It's not from you. It's from this council, and it is from the city. And so, it's not undue burdensen paperwork. It's just being a collective body that's making a decision together, and it's being transparent, and it's going forward. And just for a point of clarification, Vice Mayor, the current policy is that if the seats are available, we can bring our plus-one, and it's not a cost, but I choose to lead by example. We went to the Farm Bureau last week. Councilmember Boomgarden wasn't able to attend. I took my wife, and I'm paying the city for her ticket. We get paid $500 a month. We ought to put that back into the city if we want to bring our plus-one, if we want to go to another event that maybe isn't on the list. It's just about being good stewards. It's just about being prudent with the funds that we have, and I support what's been brought forward. I don't think it's undue and, and overburdensen, because it does bring a collective reasoning to anything that we do. It's not one of us acting alone. And, you know, going further, we don't have to be so straightforward in the policy itself, but we need to make sure that it is a matter of practice if we are attending an event that is the policymaking decision body that is there showing support. And we shouldn't be scrambling around going, "We've got extra seats at the tailor, table. Mr. Eiler, would you be able to go tonight?" We shouldn't do that. It should be a collective body. So, I support what Ms. Langley's brought forward. I don't think it's too formal myself, and it can always be a work in progress, but I think it's a good first step.
All right. Any else? Public? Go ahead.
He's had a rough day.
Again, Cindy Payne, and part of the Downtown Business Association. Thank you, guys, for your support, but I just wanted to also bring forth a little bit of information that I don't know if you guys realize. When the city does sponsor our event, we do graciously get Public Works. We 100% love that, but we also get a bill for the police department. So, out of the amount of money you guys sponsor, we do have to pay, and when you guys come to our events to ride on our trains or say hi, we don't pay you. I mean, just so everybody doesn't think, you know, we're paying you, you're coming to say hi. So, anyway, that was when you fund the Downtown Business Association, that does get our own money through our businesses, we, you know, you're more of just a sponsorship, but with your sponsorship, you, you send us a bill, and that comes from that. So, just wanted to kind of clarify that to everybody. Any questions? Getting good up here, so...
There you are. You'll be up here next time. That's right. Hello, ma'am.
Pat Miller, Sutter County Taxpayers Association. I just want to caution the council to be very stingy with taxpayer dollars. To spend it on nonprofits when we could use the money for potholes and, and police out in the Walton area seems to me a little far out. Now, the in-kind services, I understand. That's, that's good. You're, you're supporting a, a good event, and, you know, they need the, they need the traffic control and et cetera, but be very, very cautious about spending taxpayer money on nonprofits, unless you want to give the Sutter County Taxpayers Association a donation.[1228.41][1228.41](Laughter). Yeah.
I knew that was coming. All right. A lot of good input, a lot of good perspectives. It's interesting to sit back when I get to talk last and hear all the, all the opinions, and what I came up with, you know, as this has evolved and even beforehand, was, I think, as has been said, the key to this, among other things, is balance. Everything cannot be about police firing roads. We have to, we have a quality of life aspect, and it's important that we show support for key causes in our community, because it's exactly what it is. It's who we serve, and to chip off, in this case, $55,000 off of a $68 million-plus budget in, in respect to providing community support for, for literally thousands of people, I think it's, it's money well spent. I do understand we need to be cautious and prudent, which is why we're having this conversation to begin with. I appreciate Councilwoman Espendola's comments about identifying specific groups that we should sponsor and whatnot. However, I never thought I would say this, I'm even going more liberal than you are.[1310.11][1310.11](Laughter). I didn't mean to use the word liberal, but, and I don't, I don't know that we should pigeonhole, pigeonhole ourselves in identifying specific groups, because we have the criteria there ahead of time, and it's very clear, and I agree with every line item on there, in that we don't even need to do that. We just, as long as the, the group meets that criteria, they can come before us and request a sponsorship, and I'd be happy to do so if everything else falls into place, including the bottom line. To Vice Mayor Cardoza's point, for $1,000, my, my mind, what I was thinking was the same thing. In the interest of efficiency, I understand the accountability aspect for sure, but I want to throw out the idea, perhaps, the dollar amount I came to mind was $500. We have events or organizations, if they're going to ask for $500 or less, they're going to be a smaller organization, they're going to be an organization, again, as long as they meet our criteria here, that might not understand the process. They might understand that, "Oh, we have to wait to the next council meeting," which is two weeks from now, before we can get your approval, even though your event is for next week. So, if we did afford our city manager some discretion, in my opinion, $500 on the front end, as long as, and I fully trust this, this, this basic baseline criteria is met, I do not have a problem with that.
So, the only thing I would note with that is when you establish the budget on an annual basis, that you set aside the dollar amount that, that would be subject to, because otherwise, $500 could eat up your budget pretty quickly, depending upon the number of requests that are received and the frequency of the requests.
Right. So, the $500 would be, in my mind, maybe it is part of that 55, the so-called 55 we've already allocated. So, rather than if somebody wants $100 sponsorship, if you will, going through the entire process and coming before us, the city manager would have a discretion if, as long as your criteria is meant to go ahead in the interest of, of time to sign that off.
Correct. But what I'm saying is that whenever you establish the annual budget, because this is based upon a first-come, first-served basis in terms of council approval, that you might just want to set aside, if you were to save 55,000, that only a certain dollar amount would be subject to that $500 city manager discretionary approval, so that behind the scenes, you know, you have all of these requests coming in, and they're just eating away at that total amount available, and then you have a large request that comes in, and you're unable to fund it, because you don't have the funding.
Especially if it's one we traditionally supported. Okay, that makes, that makes a lot of sense.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
From a company that gets bombarded with community requests from nine different locations all over the North State, you might want to consider, or we may want to consider, giving you that discretionary authority, but break it into quarters. That way, you can constructively tell people, "Hey, we're, we've expended our budget, our giving budget for this quarter. You're welcome to apply for the next quarter," but at least you can tell them, those needy organizations that, that do make application, that, "Sorry, we've given our, our quarterly allotment, but we'd like to consider you in the future." That way, you're just not telling them a solid no. This has worked for us, and, again, I think the potential for the city receiving numerous requests, especially at that lower level, could easily overwhelm the system. So, I throw that out, Mr. Mayor, just as a possibility.
The one thing that comes to my mind on that is, we maybe, is that for donations that they're asking?
Donations, sponsorships.
Do we typically make straight-up donations? We have?
Well, I think, like, the, the toy run, the motorcycles through town, they used to be a budget setup, up to $2,500, $500 in a pop.
The one, I like that idea. The one challenge I can think of is some of these events are annual, and so they, they're already set. Maybe they're not, but some of them might be donated yet.
I just have one other point of clarification. The way this is written doesn't mean that each request would come before council in open session.
Okay.
And so, the way it's written is, and a council member signs off on the application, it gets submitted to the city manager's office. We would approach the mayor to see if the mayor approves. If the mayor approves, then it's approved and it moves forward. If the mayor doesn't approve, then the city manager's office would approach two other council members, not indicating that, you know, who's in favor, just to see if we can get two additional council members to sign off. If the two additional council members sign off, then it would be approved.
Okay. You answered my concern, and I did read that today, but I think I got thrown off when we said it before the entire council. I will admit that publicly. I also please ask for my, your forgiveness on the liberal comment, again. That just slipped out, and did not mean that.
And I'm wearing red.
And I know better.
Right? I'm wearing red. I'm like...
So, that being said, thank you very much, Diana. And it is important, I think, to get these criteria in place, and it's also important, and where Sandy, she already leave, she's right in front of me. Thank you for, for coming. Thank you for reading that, being concerned and being actively involved, and I really, really appreciate that and your participation. We do not want to derail any relationship or any of the work you guys are doing. It's, it's great, and we're proud to be partners with you and always will be. All right? So, with that.
I think there's still a point of clarification of whether this is going to the mayor and a council member or three council members, correct? Or did I miss that?
No, so there's two options for approval. One would be the initial council member sign off plus the mayor, or if the mayor's not available or is not in favor of signing off, then the city manager's office would approach two other council members, and so in that situation, you would have three council members signing off on the event. If three council members won't sign off, then it's not approved.
Of, of any of the requests that would come to the city manager's office?
Right.
Okay.
I hate to what-if this, but one of whomever sitting here at the time is also the one bringing their request forward. Do we need a second?
Yeah, then we would need a second.
All right.
Yeah, so it's a combination of mayor plus council member or three council members.
All right. That's reasonable. All right.
To the mayor.
We've already had public comment?
Yes, thank you. There was one clarification that didn't make it in. If we could clarify that all events must provide a public benefit to the Yuba City residents, that would go a long way to addressing gift-to-public funds issues.
I agree.
Thank you very much. So, if any motion would include that...
I agree. Can't think of one that doesn't, that we've already been involved in, but that's, that's great. Thank you very much. All right. We'll be good? Have already done public comment?
The only, the only thing that, in terms of, I don't know if we need to modify the resolution to incorporate Councilman Boomgarden's suggestion for, or whether or not we do that at the budget process in terms of, for the smaller requests, you know, having a quarterly allotment, we didn't clarify that.
Well, it'd be you plus one, Diana, no matter what. If they came in, it'd be you plus one, no matter what?
No, I'm talking about Councilman Boomgarden's request that, you know, for the $500 or less, that you have a certain allotment on a quarterly basis that...
That was merely a suggestion. We'll stick with the original recommendation.
Okay.
Plus, adding that all events must provide benefit to the city.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We're not, we're not changing the resolution to where anything under 500 can just get the city manager. We're keeping it as written with just the public... We're keeping it as written with just the public funds clause.
That was resolved, that was clarified, yeah. So, basically, it's back to what you were suggesting.
Okay.
Also, the resolution does not clarify who, you know, for which individuals, the, if the city were to acquire a table or, you know, sponsorship, which individuals would be covered through that sponsorship to attend.
Right, and I think that's going to be part of the motion?
We can, if we want, we can handle thinking outside of the box here. The resolution, as far as how we do sponsorships or whatnot, and then we can, once that's adopted, clarify me if I'm thinking outside of the box here too much, Mr. Chaffin, do. So, we don't convolute one resolution, do we look at a later resolution once we have how we're going to sponsor things as far as what the attendance should be, and, because it should be the, the policy decision-makers, period, and the city manager, but would it be better if that's handled at a separate, so it's not convoluted?
Yes, this is a sponsorship, not an attendance bylaws, per se. You could add some very kind of generic language, if you wanted to, about the city may purchase tickets, and if it does, the city manager and the mayor shall determine how they're distributed, and then later, you could direct staff to come back with a memo or resolution suggesting on how that would be implemented, and then you could move forward that way. Or you could bring it back as a second resolution.
I would say modify the original, to include that.
Okay. Do we need a motion to go through all this, then, tonight, or are we just looking direction to bring back a resolution at the next meeting?
This is recommendation, policy.
Right.
Right. You could do a recommendation to approve it as is with the modification I suggested, and bring back a resolution for attendance policy at a future meeting.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, would that mean that we would have an additional resolution to clarify the attendance policy?
Right.
How do we make it all in one? Just add another whereas to the...
You, you can make it all as one. All you need to do is add language in the policy, and we can do that if you give us the nod now, is that the city may purchase tickets to community events as part of a sponsorship, and the mayor and the city manager shall determine the use of those tickets as applicable, and then you can come up with an internal policy. Diana can work on that, you could work on that, for example, that would be sent out to the city council, saying, here's the policy we're going to apply for distribution of tickets unless somebody has a concerns, if not, bring it back and have a public discussion on it.
Now, am I splitting hairs when I say, because sometimes a sponsorship includes tickets, we're not actually buying tickets? You buy a table and you get eight people to sit there.
Right.
And what we're saying is, of that eight people can only be council, city manager, or staff.
Well, what it would do is you'd come up with a policy as to how that would work internally, and that could be done at a lower level than this particular document.
Okay.
It would just be a, a city practice of how that is done. So, for certain events, for example, you may want certain members from Public Works to attend because it's related to Public Works issues.
Okay. Clear?
Clear as mud.
All right, go for it.
All right. I move that we adopt the resolution as presented, establishing an administrative policy to set guidelines for city sponsorship at community events and organizations, with the stipulation of clarifying the use of public funds and the attendance language that was given early.
Purchase of tickets and, or tickets that come with sponsorships, okay.
Exactly what he said.
Thank you.
Okay, now, this is going so smoothly. I think we have a member of the public who has decided to come in under the wire and comment on the issue. So, for you, we're delaying a second to, to give Elaine a chance to speak.
You guys could do what you want, but...
No, you're good.
But...
We want to hear from you.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but when this was explained, you go to the mayor and one other person, and they approve it, and then it says you go and get three people. How can you do that?
Through the city manager.
Through the city manager, but it was implied, it was elected.
No, she clarified, she mentioned Brown Act concerns.
Well, I'm very concerned about the Brown Act.
Well, no, Diana clarified that...
Would you clarify it, please?
She already did, but, okay.
So, if we receive an application that's signed off by a council member, we would first approach the mayor, if he's available, to see if he will sign off on the sponsorship. If the mayor signs off on the sponsorship, it's approved. If the mayor doesn't sign off on the sponsorship, I would then approach another council member, not telling them who was supportive of the event, see if they're willing to sign off. If they are, then I go to another council member and not indicate who is in support of the sponsorship, to see if they're willing to sign off. So, it'd be independent, they would not be having discussions amongst each other. It would be through the city manager in terms of determining who's willing to sign off on it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Elaine. Appreciate the clarification.
And I'll second that motion.
Manny seconds a thank you to Elaine.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of Mr. Shaw's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed.
With.
All right, very good. We made it.
Made it. Next item.
Wow. Let's see.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Drive safe. Darrell, good to see you, man.
Good to see you, Darrell.
Looking pretty healthy.
I'm doing comedy.
Apparently, I am. It's an inside joke.
Yeah.
Um...